Good evening. I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting to order unless there's an objection. Seeing no objection, the meeting is called to order. Thank you. Councilwoman Lautenbacher, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please?
Yes. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. Please join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief, you are up.
Right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure tonight to stand before you and present our officer and employee of the first quarter and second quarter. And I'd ask for those four individuals to come forward. Perfect. Always a great opportunity when we get to recognize our staff. And I apologize that we waited this long to do the first quarter, folks, but this is the opportunity for us to do it tonight. The first person is Officer Christian Dobbins standing next to me. And I'm going to kind of read most of these because they involve quite a bit, and I want to make sure I cover everything. Officer Dobbins steadfast commitment to the Public Safety Cadet Program, which is our former Explorer Program, is truly inspiring. His consistent presence at weekly meetings and active mentorship of these young adults is a testament to his passion for cultivating the next generation of dedicated officers. During the first quarter, Officer Dobbins demonstrated his selflessness and deep rooted sense of duty by participating in the convivial care for Spalding County. In the aftermath of the devastating tornado, Officer Dobbins stepped up without hesitation to help this community heal and rebuild, exemplifying his devotion to serving others. After attaining his child passenger safety technician certification, Officer Dobbins used his valuable skills by participating in a car seat check during the first quarter. His diligent work in conducting and assisting in numerous car seat checks displays his commitment to ensuring the safety of our youngest community members. Officer Dobbins has consistently proven himself an indispensable asset to his colleagues, displaying outstanding dependability and professionalism in the face of high call volumes, critical incident, and staffing shortages. His team oriented approach and ability to adapt under pressure set a high standard for others in the department. I'm excited to present this to Officer Dobbins. The next is one of our PSRs, Kimberly Stone. She's the employee of the first quarter. PSR Stone comes into work daily with a positive attitude and goes above and beyond her primary duties as a PSR. She spends her duty nights, she works nights catching up on the paperwork from the previous shifts to help the oncoming shift start as smoothly as possible. She consistently pays attention to the radio traffic to assist the officers and chat com with vital information on calls for service. She also listens for wanted persons over the radio and begins the confirmation process to speed up the process. During the first quarter, PSR Stone volunteered and assisted in the active shooter drill that took place at the State Farm Building. PSR Stone goes out of her way to help all those around her daily. She is an inspiration to us all. I guess I might have should have waited till all of them, but anyways. The next is our officer of the second quarter, Mario Yumana. During the second quarter of 2023, Officer Yumana responded to a complex and highly demanding multiple person shot call. Upon arriving promptly at the scene, he quickly located the necessary medical supplies and applied a chest seal and tourniquet to the victim's gunshot wounds. His composed demeanor and swift actions under pressure may have played an instrumental role in the victim's survival and subsequent recovery. In another case during the second quarter involving a burglary and entering auto investigation, Officer Yumana took the initiative to monitor the flock LPR hot list, identify multiple suspect vehicles. His proactive surveillance efforts resulted in the location and apprehension of a suspect with outstanding warrants, demonstrating his dedication towards safeguarding our community. As a patrol officer, Officer Yumana is distinguished by his high level of professionalism, exemplary teamwork, meticulous investigative approach, and superior written report skills. The thoroughness and precision of his reports have provided critical information and context for numerous investigations, further reflecting his commitment towards excellence and his significant contribution to the overall effectiveness of our department. And last but not least is our employee of the second quarter, which is Hannah Madden. She's our prisoner transport officer. Hannah Madden has gone above and beyond in her duties as a transport officer. She has proven to be an exceptional asset to the police department, municipal court, and administrative staff. Due to the department's ongoing lack of coverage for PTO during the second quarter, Officer Madden has transported and booked inmates at DeKalb County Jail to relieve officers, picked up wanted individuals from various agencies, and transported inmates to municipal court on court dates. She has assisted with the fleet, uniform drop offs, pickups, and any general tasks asked of her to prevent having to pull officers and staff away from their daily responsibility. Despite her own heavy workload, Hannah consistently strives to help others and displays a high level of teamwork while maintaining a genuine smile and positive attitude that reflects on all those around her. Thank you.
So it's at the end of your press. So we have, we're good. I know we want to take pictures. And I know Kathy's here, and I think I see Liz back there. But I first want to thank you all and commend you all. Thank you for your service and thank you for your exemplary service to our community. Our residents are so grateful you're here. And we so appreciate that you continue to call Dunwoody your work home. And you have to let us know if there's anything we can ever do for you. And to all your colleagues who have joined us today, just want to reiterate that we are incredibly grateful to each of you for choosing Dunwoody as your place to serve our community or a community. We're so grateful you have chosen us. And, and we get great feedback, you know, on the service you should provide. And I'm really sorry it stormed at five o'clock at rush hour today because I'm sure that made everything just particularly pleasant. But again, just reach out if y'all need anything. We're here for you. And congratulations. And I don't know how you want to organize the photos.
If y'all want to come down.
You want us to come down? Okay. Congratulations. Thank you again to Dunwoody's finest. We're very proud of all the award winners today, and we appreciate the service from everyone. That's just, it was an awesome presentation. All right, we're going to have public comment in just a second, but as everyone exits, Michael Smith, you want to come quickly, make your intro, not quickly, but quickly would be good. Make your introductions, please.
Thank you. I'm happy to welcome two new people in the Public Works Department. On far right is Michelle Herose. She's our new Deputy Director of Public Works. She's a Georgia Tech graduate, professional engineer, previously worked with City of Roswell, City of Decatur, and has done some work with the PATH Foundation and others. So glad to have her. And then the one immediately to my right is Tiffany Womack, not related to the street. It's two Ms., not one. But Tiffany also is a Georgia Tech graduate and licensed professional engineer and comes to us from one of the large consultants in town that's been doing a lot of work with Georgia DOT. So glad to have them both and just wanted to introduce you. They'll be involved in a lot of the projects and things we have going on in Public Works.
Thank you and welcome. Do you have an inside scoop like on 285 and 400, right? We hear that they're almost finished. We hear that a lot. Right. Gotcha. Okay. Well, thank you very much and welcome. We appreciate it. And then quickly, the two, I saw two scouts. If you want to stand up and just introduce yourself, you don't have to come to the microphone. Just tell us your name and what troop you're with. I'll start right here. Andrew. Alan. Okay, Alan, and and what nice. Thank you both for coming. We rely on our scouts for lots of community service. We appreciate you being here. All right. Public comment. I have two cards. If you want to speak tonight, the cards are back behind, by chief. We have another section of public comment at the end of the meeting. Chris Ozar, Ozor, just come on up. You'll have three minutes at the microphone. Just introduce yourself. And you'll have three minutes. I'm not sure I pronounced your last name correctly, so.
Good evening, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. Yes, you did a good job. It's pronounced Oz. Again, my name is Chris Oz. And I arrived in Colorado in 1985, and I stayed in Colorado for about 35 years. My job brought me to Atlanta. And then I found Dunwoody and fell in love with Dunwoody and decided to make Dunwoody home. I went to Metro State College in Colorado, and I started journalism, my bachelor's degree. Then I went to Regis University, where I got my master's degree in computer information systems. So I want to introduce myself as a candidate for the city council member, District One, Position Four, I post four. I'm really excited about this decision that I have made. Because I was really spoilt to make this decision because I'm going to be a grandfather in October. And my daughter and her daughter want to live in Dunwoody. So I want to be part of the voice that ensures that they're going to be in a safe community. I want to be part of the voice that makes sure that the kids will be able to play outside without being afraid of any type of violence. I want to be part of the reason why these schools should be able to provide the type of education that I got in Colorado, so that they would grow up and become positive and great citizens of the United States. So those are the reasons that I want to become an active member of the community and be able to make my voice count in the hope that I would contribute positively to the betterment of the people of Dunwoody. Thank you.
Thank you. Chelsea Juris, I bet there's a silent letter in there that I am not getting. If you'll just introduce yourself, you'll have three minutes and say your last name, please, too.
Good evening. I'm Chelsea Juris.
I know how to write.
Yeah, that's good. I'm the Director of PR and Advocacy with the Atlanta Apartment Association. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. We represent managers and owners of apartment communities across the 16 county metro Atlanta region. And here in the city of Dunwoody, our members own and operate about 25 apartment communities. So I wanted to just briefly speak to the proposal regarding multifamily video surveillance at multifamily properties. We sincerely appreciate the city's focus on public safety, and our members take the safety and security of their member properties very, very seriously. We would just appreciate the opportunity to have some time to meet with members of the police department and the city staff team and provide some feedback to assist in making sure that the standards that are ultimately adopted are achievable for the properties here in Dunwoody and will be successful. Again, if there's time, we would like to do some additional research on best practices for surveillance in residential communities and work to kind of dig in with the properties here in Dunwoody to see what the cost would be on both the initial installation of the systems as well as the ongoing monitoring of the surveillance and understand how that cost will be passed through to residents and the impact on affordability. Our association is currently working on a similar proposal in City of Atlanta, and we'd love to share our experiences there and kind of the lessons that we're learning on their proposal. And again, just appreciate and look forward to the opportunity to working with you all.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That concludes the cards I have for public comment. If you have additional comments, we will have a section after the, towards the end of the meeting. And with that, we're on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have questions or comments about items on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Move by Joe.
Second.
Second by Rob. Any further discussion or questions?
Mayor, you may have one. Give me one second, please.
Okay.
The construction, I have a quick question for Mr. Smith regarding the gateway sign construction regarding the Tilly Mill.
Keep coming.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, Michael, I have a question regarding the Tilly Mill sign in the sense of the location. It looks like it's awfully close to the streets and very close. It's in the right of way, which they all may be in the right of way, but this one seems awfully close. I remember working to try to put the other monuments, the Dunwoody North monuments, further away from the streets. Is there any opportunity to take a look at that and give me your opinion as far as the appropriateness to the location?
It's where the, the gateway sign is located is at the very back of the right of way. So we would, you know, we couldn't go any further from the street without going off the right of way. I'm not exactly sure how far it is off the street, but it looks like based on the drawing where the sidewalk is, that it's probably at least probably 10 feet, probably a little more off the, the curve of the roadway. But there, but there's not any room to go any further without going off the right of way.
Is there any opportunity to get a no cost easement from the property owner in that location to move it further away? Have we looked at that? Or have we thought of doing that in the past?
We are doing that at some other locations. I'd have to look and see, you know, I don't know at that location if there's a fence there. It might be beyond where the fence is, but.
Based on my research, there's no fences. There's some trees. There's some pretty big, there's some wide land there. You know, I think we can move it back. I'm just wondering if we could think about negotiating or talking to the landowners, either the meditation center or the property owner in front of it or next to it, to see if there's a way to just, I'm just a little concerned. That one seems a little close to me in the sense of the being close to the right of way.
I can go back and look and see how close it is. I mean, we tried to push these as far away from the road as we can where we had room. I do, I would be concerned if we push it back further to, to make it visible, we would maybe have to remove some trees or at least one tree. But
All right. So all I would ask is that you take a look at it. If it's possible, great. If it's not possible, or if it's not feasible for any reason, I fully understand. I just wanted to make sure that was looked at a little closer, and it sounds like we're doing that now. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions? All right, there's a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. So are you ready for the next? Okay. I think you have to read it, Jessica. Oops, I saw that before it happened. All right.
Item number six is a resolution to declare property surplus to provide a mechanism for the sale and disposal of surplus property and for other lawful purposes. Richard Plato.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Working with city staff, we have identified 12 vehicles that are no longer needed for operations. And I'm here before you to ask for approvals so we can dispose of them in the most cost efficient manner.
Okay, anybody have questions on this? John?
Move to approve.
Move by John. Just get a second and then I need a second.
Second.
Move by Councilman Henigan, seconded by Councilwoman Harris. Any, go ahead, Councilwoman Harris.
I just had a quick question. Once there
Surplus.
Surplus. Do we already have replacement vehicles on site? Or is this something that will be in the 2024 budget?
Some of them are, will be replaced as part of the 2024 budget. Some of them, we don't need any, we use them very infrequently. So we're just getting rid of them totally. I, the finance and the community development ones very rarely are used. So we do not, are not asking for replacements for them.
Okay, any further discussion? There's a motion on the floor. All in favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously, Jessica, whenever you're ready for the next one.
Item number sis seven, excuse me, is SPOSS Intergovernmental Agreement and Resolution, Authorization, Approval, Jay Van Niki.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is the culmination of many, many months of work with all the cities in the county. And as we say, it's a lot like landing a plane. It ends up going down really quick and then comes to a grinding halt. And this is the grinding halt for us. So it's a successful negotiation between the cities and the counties. Before you tonight are two resolutions for you to pass, and one of them, I've, I had to email you an update this morning. There are two things that you will approve. The first is the actual resolution to join in on the call for election. That is the one that actually will list out the, the projects that you have listed. And I'm going to put it on the screen just for the public's view. Is that up on the screen yet? Nope. And now it's getting there. There we go. This, this is the end of the resolution part of it, the, the first of the two things that are on here. These are the categories that we have talked about over the past few weeks, based on the final numbers negotiated between the counties and the city. So Dunwoody's estimated share will be just shy of 60 million, 59.8 million, with 50 million of that allocated towards transportation, 8.1 million public safety, a new category of parks, recreation, and green space at 1 million, and still a small amount for repairs of capital projects at 598,000. The only thing that's really changed percentage wise from the previous plots is the creation of the parks and recreation category, and part of that was carved out of the repair. The council has set up a repair fund, which we have looked at, and it will be adequate over the next six years. We still want some in there in case we need it at a future date, but right now, this is the recommendation that staff has. So this is the first of the, the two items for approval. The second one is an intergovernmental agreement between the county and all of the cities in DeKalb, Save Atlanta. And what this intergovernmental agreement does is lays out the terms for the SPOSS and lays out the distribution of, of proceeds. The city of Dunwoody will receive basically 7% equivalent to our current population share as of 2023 estimates. The cities worked with the Atlanta Regional Council on developing the distribution for this, and it's basically a population based estimate based off current map. So some other cities, we're not, one of them can annex that, those aren't going to be included in it. It's the maps as they are today. So what we're asking for you to do today is approve the resolution, approve the intergovernmental agreement with a substitute of the IGA that the county approved Thursday. And they actually approved it Thursday afternoon. We had a draft in there. We actually had the last SPOSS version as a placeholder. So we would need to have an approval of a substitute for that. And you've had the substitute sent to you in the clerk's office and then authorization for the mayor, city manager, or city clerk to execute all documents necessary and proper.
Questions? So it was a culmination of lots of work and a lot of negotiation between the cities and then the county. We all came together at the 11th hour to come up with a plan that I think is as fair as it can be. We're in a very unique position in DeKalb because we cannot annex. Everybody else can grow through annexation, but we worked it out. And there's things that should, that, that everyone sacrificed a little, which is the way it should be. No one's thinking they got the perfect plan, but we actually did really well. And just to educate the public, in DeKalb, if SPOSS goes away, which means it fails, then we revert to something called host. So for taxpayers and consumers in Dunwoody, in DeKalb, you'll still be paying this one cent sales tax, correct, Jay?
We will go, if it fails, we will go from two to one. The SPOSS would go away and Ehost converts to host.
But when Ehost converts to host, there's a big hit on your county property taxes, correct?
Correct. What would change is instead of the general and the hospital tax on the county, it would be spread across the, all the other districts that are in the county, and it's a much, much less rich.
Right. So it would mean that you're, you would see an automatic increase in your property taxes from the county, not the city. We don't have an Ehost credit yet, but the county, it would, it would have an impact. So anybody have questions on the SPOSS list? We've kind of agreed to that already. We've been working on it here. All right. See, do I have a motion, Councilwoman Harris? So I think we need two motions, correct?
It could be, it's written, so it can be done as one motion and one.
Okay.
Oh, it is.
Okay.
I move to approve the included resolution to join in the call for election for continuation of the Ehost Equalization Homestead Option Sales Tax and continuation of the SPOSS Special Purpose Land Option Sales Tax for DeKalb County and to indicate Dunwoody's intent for funding from the 20, for funding from the 2023 SPOSS. To approve by substitute the intergovernmental IGA agreement with DeKalb County and the cities of DeKalb, the substitute will replace the draft attachment A of the original IGA with attachment A as passed by the DeKalb County Board of Commissioners on August 24, 2023, and to authorize the mayor, city manager, city clerk, and/or city attorney to execute all documents necessary and proper concerning these two documents.
Second.
Move by Councilwoman Harris, second by Councilwoman Lambert. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, hearing that none, that passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And appreciate everyone's support. And that's done. Chief Grogan? Thank you, thank you, thank you. And um appreciate everyone's support. And that's done. Chief Grogan. Yeah.
Item number eight is a proven approval of the MOU between the city of Dunwoody and the DeKalb County School District for automated. Speed enforcement in school zones.
Good evening again. I know that all of you are um. Probably like me, excited to have this item before you on the agenda. Uh as you know, we signed a contract with a company to provide uh automated speed enforcement in the school zones back in February. Of twenty twenty. And since that time, we've been working with the DeKalb County School District to get them to agree. To file the application uh with the Department of Transportation. There's been a several changes in superintendents and a recent change. Um with a gentleman named Dr. Horton. And the police chief in Brookhaven just happened to reach out to Dr. Horton and have a conversation. Um and they came to an agreement uh in principle and the uh. Dr. Horton has reviewed the contract and is agreeable to sign in it, uh which is the attached one exactly the same that Brookhaven signed. Uh this has been previously um looked at by us and was uh approved. But never implemented by DeKalb County. And it offers a ten percent revenue share with the school district. Uh for these funds to be used for specific purposes related to public safety at the school. And um the DeKalb soup, school superintendent did not want to just do one city at a time. They wanted to try to get all the cities that are interested to go ahead and move forward with this so that they could implement this in. Pretty much all the cities. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions? Tom?
Uh thank you, Chief. Um I'm excited that we can hopefully move forward with this. Uh I just uh for a point of clarity on the on the revenue share, is that um is that grosser net revenue received? Because my understanding is that every photograph taken of a violation needs to be reviewed by a a police officer. And I presume that'll be a Dunwoody police officer. There will be time and cost associated with that. So is that?
So it's it, so the way the contract is structured, the vendor gets a certain percentage of the money for providing the equipment. And then the city gets, I think the split's like sixty eight, thirty two, something like that. So rather than us get the sixty eight, we would get ten percent less than it.
So we're we're absorbing the cost of whatever that is to review, okay?
Yep.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm just really pleased to see this, Chief. I know it's a great first step. I I just looked at my inbox. I remember December twenty twenty. Asking Mike Lewinsky and Sally Harold to introduce some legislation at the state level. And then you worked so hard with the chiefs and we've worked so hard political level. And that was, this is, this is legislation. This is the slow forward moving progress of what it takes to get things done. So it's an all of the above effort. So thank you so much, uh Chief.
Um. Chief, so our studies are old, so red.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to redo.
We'll have to redo the studies. Okay. Um anybody else?
Then I have something when appropriate.
Sorry, John. Okay.
Chief, thanks for bringing this forward. We've been looking for this for quite a while. I was looking at both the red speed contract comparing it against Georgia code. And I'm wondering if you can clarify something for me, if you could look, if you're aware. The contract says that we are responsible for setting the time, which I know that we will do. In the same contract, it says it also is up to twenty four hour operation. In the state law, it shows an hour before and an hour after school uh school times. So I take for granted that those the school cameras will only be operating during school hours, one hour before and one hour after. Is that correct?
That is correct, one hundred percent.
And then as far as enforcement, um the state law shows that you can't enforce until ten miles over the speed limit. So for a speed limit for a school zone, like let's say, call it twenty five, thirty five normal, twenty five school zone. You really can't do enforcement or there'll be no tickets or automated tickets until they're ten miles over the speed limit by state law, right?
That's correct. And then during, during the day, it'll be the thirty five mile hour, so it'd be forty five, ten mile though.
Okay, but we can only enforce during school hours.
One hour before school starts, all during the day to one hour after school ends.
Okay, so it's well, got it. Okay.
Schools in session.
So the reason that is, is because there are campuses in Georgia where they have buildings on either side of big roads, I think.
Well, and that and plus people are coming and going to schools all the time, picking up kids, kids leave early, that sort of thing.
Right.
Alright, um the fines that is levied that come to the city can only be used for law enforcement and public safety reasons. Um and these cameras are not being put up for to be punitive. We're really being put up to increase safety. And my hope would be that we would be able to put some of these funds when collected to find ways to lower the speed. In problematic areas within the city by maybe putting up the radar, speed limit signs where needed. I mean, we have some of those up, but if appropriate, I'd like to see a few more. One final question for you, Chief. I know that these violations don't go against the offender. Uh their driving record, right? It doesn't, there's no points available. Tell me, I am a a current reader of your Dunwoody Police Department Daily Bulletin to see the. The fine work of the police officers and who gets arrested and who gets a speeding ticket. Will these violations be listed in the Daily Bulletin?
That's a good question. There there, I don't believe they would be listed from an, the other is listed autom- automatically. Because the citation is written using our software. This is a separate uh system. So uh not likely. We would probably have to do something to make that happen, uh some type of integration.
Alright, and then just one final point. I know that the red uh speed contract allows for a separate optional LPR. Uh type of was add on. And I take for granted that we, based on the memo, we're going to be moving forward with the LPR aspect of these cameras.
Correct.
Alright, that's it, Chief. Thank you so much. I appreciate the answers.
Alright, one, one thing I'll add too is traditionally what we're seeing in places that have deployed the cameras. Is uh that initially there may be uh a certain number of citations written or issued. But over time, that number drops drastically because you typically you'll have the same people commuting that way. They'll become familiar with it. And they'll, they'll alter their uh driving habits and they'll slow their speed down, which is ultimately what we want people to do.
Right, that's the goal. And you can see it in the cities that have been doing it a few years. You can see like it's way up here and then it plummets. So don't spend the money ahead of time.
Yep.
Um alright, anybody else? Yeah.
Assuming that this gets passed tonight, what um how long before it's actually, before they're actually in place?
A lot of that is dependent on how fast the application, because you know, I don't know what process to have. Are they just going to sign off on it right away? Plus, uh has to go through the application process with the DOT, which can take months uh to to do that. And then we have to have the new speed studies done as well, so that takes time, so.
Right. Is the speed study done first or?
Yeah, we'll have to do the.
Right.
Or.
Right. Because at the Capitol, the school systems lobbyist was muttering that our study was six years old.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah, we'll definitely repeat.
Just maybe need it with, as we present the application, so maybe as quickly as possible.
Yep.
Alright, anybody else? Alright, I don't think we have a motion yet.
Move to approve.
Move by Joe. What a popular one.
Give it to her. Pick one.
I heard uh Tom Lambert. Um Jessica, did you get that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief, for hanging in there with us.
Thank you.
Item number nine is the collaborative contract amendment, Richard McCloud.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh this is uh the fourth amendment to the uh agreement. Uh this is to shift the hours from senior planner who's Madeline, who's going back to school at Georgia Tech. Um she will uh go from forty hours to thirty hours. So we're just asking for that contract amendment.
Anybody have questions? This is an action item.
Move to approve.
Move by John, second by Tom. Any further questions or discussions? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. And then Jessica, I'll take it from here if that's okay. Chief Grogan, as he approaches. To present on ten through twelve, and I think you can present them all at once. Um I want to talk a little bit about how we got here today. So in the last year or so. The Cab County has uh passed an ordinance requiring. Certain convenience stores and gas stations to have security cameras. And I, and I, when we look at where our highest crimes rates are. I thought it might be an interesting discussion to see if there's techniques and tools that we can use. To make Dunwoody safer for everyone, particularly the people that live in those communities and do business. Um or visit our cities, our city. Um additionally. You know, at the end of this, how we can help the private sector or encourage the private sector to become a partner. In our public safety initiatives. So with that, Chief, uh.
Sure.
Can open up the floor and I think it's fine to talk about them all at once.
Yeah, so there's uh as the mayor said, there's three separate uh ordinances. One that deals with uh surveillance systems at multifamily rental dwellings. A second one that deals with the systems at hotels, motels and extended stay hotels. And the third uh that deals with. Hold on just a second. Uh surveillance systems at convenience stores, service stations and high risk retail establishments. And basically, all the ordinances kind of mirror each other. And some of the requirements of the ordinance is the establishment of a camera technological standards. Capabilities and placement requirement that cameras work twenty four seven. A requirement that all broken or non functioning cameras be repaired within ten days. And a notice of the use of video surveillance system be placed in a conspicuous place near the entrance. Uh on the high risk retail establishments, there's a definition for that. And this is a location that gets designated uh by me as the chief of police, which means they've had more than six calls for police. As defined in the ordinance within thirty days. Or having a serious crime. And there's a list of serious crimes that are also in the in the proposed ordinance. And if they have one of those there, they would be designated as a um high risk retail establishment. Uh obviously, uh you know, the ordinance would help us be able to produce video evidence, hopefully. Uh either through subpoena or voluntarily sharing it with us, as most businesses do today when something happens on their premises. Uh would help us uh to gather the evidence in order to make an arrest, you know, particularly after the fact. Potentially, it could be useful for us in the future if businesses were willing to share some of that with us even in before. Um uh incidents or crimes happen as we move forward using, using technology. Um I think the uh most of the, or a lot of, I won't say most. But a lot of the convenience stores, service stations, uh hotels, motels. You know, even apartment communities or multifamily already have, most of them have surveillance systems. Uh what this does is require them to have certain specific ones with specific, the cameras at specific locations. Uh such as parking lots, entryways, different things like that, that would be helpful from a policing standpoint or crime deterrent standpoint. And uh with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or that you guys have.
Question. Catherine.
Uh good evening, Chief. But what other cities have these ordinances on the books?
So I know uh DeKalb County has one that deals with the convenience stores. Atlanta is either has one or they're in the process of having one. I think that lady from the uh apartment community said there. Atlanta's, I think they left, uh Atlanta's looking at one for apartment communities. Uh but in our general area, I'm not aware of. Other than that, I'm not aware of any that has.
So we're the early in the game of video surveillance.
In Georgia.
In Georgia.
In in our area, yes.
Okay, is there a reason you have a quick deadline noted on there?
Pardon?
Quick deadline, it's ninety days. What you put on there?
No, that that was just put in in case the council moves forward. That gives people ample opportunity to to do it. Certainly the that deadline could be flexible. We could start it at a different date.
Did you confer with court, code enforcement about the workload?
We did. We worked with, uh Richard was, I think Richard's here somewhere. Uh we did uh met with uh Richard and his team. Along with the city attorney, city manager and everybody.
I spoke to Ray Azell, who's with the Discover Dunwoody, to talk about hotels concerns uh with this. And in particular, we got a response from the Crown Plaza. Some of the language in the proposal. Does breach IHG brand standards. That's one issue. And certainly a large issue is the cost concern. Um the Crown did look at putting a camera in every, on every floor, which is what is suggested in here. And that was seventy five thousand dollars for interior hallways. And that was a cost burden that they chose not to. Um take. Um they'd love it, but that's incredibly expensive for them. And they do ask that, we're, are we, were we to go forward and have another iteration regarding hotels? That they would be part of the conversation, that you could bring in, you know, a panel of hoteliers to to discuss, just as.
Sure.
The apartments have asked for that too. Uh I spoke to Ken Bernard about this too. And again, because we're early adopters, he says that the law is not well settled. Like this is legal, but. There could be challenges because it is, it's a government mandate on private property and it is a cost burden. And it is uh, it's preventative. So I know that if we mandate fire extinguishers, that's not really the same thing as. I mean, that's an immediate action. This, it's just not in the same category, I don't think, um as fire. So I, in general, all this strikes me as a government overreach. And I'll leave it there and let others talk about it.
Sure.
Rob?
I think I'll probably echo some of what you just said there. I I'm fine with having some discussion. Um. We need to do some community outreach, I think, to talk to. The the different types of businesses that we want to work with to kind of try to come up with what would be reasonable, because I think cost is a concern. Um. You know, I also kind of just scratching in the back of my mind, is this kind of Fourth Amendment? Privacy kind of concern. I mean, we're basically mandating um businesses spy on their customers, which they're entitled to do. But we're requiring it. And if a business chose not to, um you know, what avenue would they have to appeal that? Or uh if a business was, say, designated um a problem business, is there an appeals process for that? So those are just kind of some of the the things scratching the back of my mind. Uh you know, I like the intention of this um for sure. Uh but but I think that there are some, some um issues that need to be worked out before there's anything ready for us to look at for.
Sure.
Tom?
Uh yeah, thank you. Um so I do believe that the the timeline needs some adjusting and that's probably easy just because the. The scope of this, the the cost and the logistics alone for some of these businesses, I I think the timeline is a bit. Unreasonable uh that we're asking right now. I would echo the um the sentiments as far as I I would like to see a little bit. Uh more uh communication with with the hotels and with the apartments uh to get some feedback from them to see. Wha- what's the most appropriate way? Because as I was reading through it, there were um. So some of the the requirements of the proposed ordinance seem a little. Too, too much in in my opinion, um or or sometimes impractical, um you know, like for example with the apartments. Um having cameras dedicated to each entrance next to each building. Some of our apartment complexes are acres of property. And and they have breezeways and and I I I just don't know logistically how how we, how that would happen. And 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 if we're going to make it a requirement, we need to. Probably provide some guidance on how to make that happen as well. So I I I think, I think we need to do um some more homework on some of these. The the high risk businesses, um it, you know, it's defined as, you know, the 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 six crimes, whatever, in a thirty day period. Once you you're stamped with that designation, does that follow the business? In perpetuity? Is there an appeal process to come off of that? Is has there been any thought about that or?
Not, well, I think there's an uh, I don't think there's an appeal process built in for that to come off of it. You know, because uh.
I guess once the camera's in, it's in, but but if it, but if it, if it's, if a camera were to, the camera system were malfunctioning and needed to be replaced. And they say, hey, listen, we have not had any crime, and maybe it might be because the camera's there, who knows? But you know, what I'm saying is if a business in order to come to us and say, listen, we haven't had, we no longer fit the high risk. Can I be, have that designation removed? I'd like to see some way of working that in as well.
Certainly.
But okay, that, I think that's all for now.
I guess in, my question is, in, in regards to the nuisance business, where does perimeter mall fit there? Because certainly in and of itself, they get six calls a month to perimeter mall, but then are we going to require just the, the business that does it? Or like, how, how do you, did you all foresee it working for such a large entity as a perimeter mall, as a high street kind of thing?
Yeah, I, I think like perimeter mall has about a hundred and fifty cameras already there at the mall. So I don't know the exact placement of those cameras and how they would fit into the ordinance. But they, they certainly have a lot of cameras there already that, and these are talking about public spaces, you know, certainly not private areas.
Right, but with this ordinance, they would have to comply, those cameras would, and then some of it would be private spaces with the cash registers of a nuisance business, correct?
Well, even in a cash register, not a private space, that's a public space. You know, it's, it's not like in store rooms in the back or something like that. It's parking lots, entrances, cash resters, all those kind of are public spaces.
On private property?
Yes.
So I got a couple of points. First of all, A, absolutely, I'd like to stand up a task force or a stakeholder committee to really peel back the layer of all the interested parties, the businesses in concern, the property owners in concern, communities of interest, other, other folks that may have less representation than, than show up to council meetings. I'd, I'd love to see something like that from an equitable perspective as well. Procedurally, I'd like to understand the, you know, a lot of staff time obviously went into this, to write up the, the ordinances, to have legal review and so on. I appreciate the process. Perhaps we could have had like a pre-read versus we went down the deep where you kind of had an outline of, here's all the things we want to legislate and affect. What do y'all think about? Right? And then take it back to legal and spend more staff time and spend the money with, with, with legislative and so on. And then the last point, I'm talking about what Catherine mentioned about other cities in Georgia. What about outside of Georgia potentially as well, if they do have that? And, and what is the efficacy? What's the in-state? What's the result? Is it a reduction of crime? Is it, is it a greater arrest? I mean, what, what's the outcome that that achieves? And that I've seen over time for that. I'd like to see that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
John.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. I basically would echo what everybody else said. We would have to do the research. I mean, the, the cost, the scope of the work and all the rest needs to be explored a little bit further. The good thing is, is that this is evidence that they're going to have on their facility for their own use to provide to you, the police department, when you need it. So it's not like there's no automatic tie-in. You're not watching their video feed. It's not mandated to, you know, it, it's for their own good, as wrote it is. But that being said, the cost and the scope may be a little bit wide, and we do need to talk to everybody about what is effective or what is efficient to move forward with this type of goal. As far as, one thing that's not listed is LPRs in the sense of going on and off premises of hotels, motels, LPRs going on and off gas stations. Has there been thought of that? Or since those are in the city right-of-way, that we would be able to provide those based on our own funding?
So we, that, that was a discussion item about whether we could make LPRs mandatory. Legal felt that that was not the case on private property. But that the city could, at their expense, on the right-of-way, decide when, when and where those are put. And then it's just a cost issue.
Correct. So that would be our decision on our right-of-way to do for police purposes, but it would not be impacting the hotels, the gas stations, and those other locations.
That's correct.
All right, Chief, I think you've answered, or council has expressed my, my same concerns, and I think we just need to talk about it more, but I am interested in keeping the conversation going. So thank you.
I think the council, you know, certainly the, the hope tonight was to get feedback from all the council members, so we would know is this something that, you know, is viable, that you're interested in? It sounds like maybe. But we need more further research into this, also meet with stakeholders. And so we'll certainly do that and have some discussions afterwards.
And there's, the, the, the end result is very important, which is to find a way to reduce crime within our city. The, we don't need to rush it. We need to, we can take the right time. I think that one of the things I'd like to see data on is where the, like, at the hotels. So we, when I asked, so I started this conversation with Chief by asking the question, where are our high, our high-crime areas? Because in DeKalb, it's their convenience stores. Excuse me, but in Dunwoody, it's some of our apartment complexes, correct?
Yes, I mean, probably most communities have, you know, more crime in their apartment communities than they do in the single-family residential areas. But for us, you know, a lot of, we, we've talked about this before, it's not a secret. Most of our crime happens in the general perimeter area with all the apartment complexes, the retail establishments, the mall, different types of businesses like that. But we also have, you know, hotels typically in most communities. We're no different. Same thing with convenience stores, gas stations, things like that.
One of the things that I'd be interested in knowing is, are most of the calls for crimes related, and you don't have to answer this today, are they outside the perimeter, like outside the buildings, regardless of the building, or are they inside calls? Because if we could just find a way to partner with the private sector, but also encourage those that are having significant problems to take advantage of what technology offers, because I think the idea is, is that cameras can lead to a result of declining crime, certain kinds of crime, particularly property crimes.
Right.
And that makes up the bulk of our crime, I think.
You know, one of the reasons that the ordinance requires a notice to be posted is so that people are aware of it. And hopefully, it's like ulcers having body cameras, you might act differently if you know there's a camera recording you. Same thing with that. If there's a sign there, you may act differently and do, maybe not do something that you normally would.
Okay, so I think some conversations with stakeholders, some refining of the understanding the costs, because I think realistically, we can't ask people to pay seventy-five thousand dollars. I'm just not sure that's doable. And then figuring out where on the property the need is the greatest. And then also looking at LPRs at entrances and exits, just to give us a better handle, because even, even if we can't stop it, maybe we can catch them.
Yeah, and some of the businesses that we're, we're talking about already have their own LP.
Yes. Yeah, so maybe an inventory of that moving on to. All right, so we'll see this in some version of this in the future. Thank you for your efforts, Chief. Mr. Walker.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I'll go ahead and introduce it. It's the discussion for the contract approval to LDD Blue Lawn for the design and engineering of the Brook Run Park Maintenance Facility. As y'all remember, the committee that joined, that met to, to talk about capital improvement projects, one of the projects that they submitted to be done was to replace the maintenance facility at Brook Run Park. As y'all know, it is the former maintenance facility for the hospital that was there. The building is in quite a bit of decay and state, and we've utilized it for the Parks Department and Public Works Department for stormwater and parks maintenance for the past thirteen years. Has antiquated mechanics in it, has an old boiler system. There's a lot of problems and issues with the building, with the way it's built, and all those kind of things. So no need to get into all that. So as y'all know, we want to replace that building. We've discussed that project with LDD Blue Lawn. They do have a current on-call contract for design services with DeKalb County. John Gates has looked over the contract and verified that we can use that to piggyback off of for our design services. They would be able to go all the way from concept to construction documents and permitting, and then also provide construction administration during the construction process of the project. So with that, I'll open up to any questions that y'all may have.
And are we tearing it down? So the part that's burned is already gone. Because there was a fire, you left that part out. All right.
Already started the demolition process.
It's got room for vendor offices in there? Who do you anticipate will have vendor offices?
Sure. So all of our parks maintenance and public works contract is through outside vendors. Right now, it's triscapes. So stormwater, public works, paving, and park maintenance is all through private companies. And they all have office space now, usually just a room with a computer set up and then meeting space. Also, there's the old kind of common area, kitchen area, where they can come in and eat lunch in the existing building, so that would be a component of it. And then also during the homecoming park design process, council expressed an interest in moving the operations team out of the White House that's on the Vermont property to Brook Run, so those offices would also be part of the construction.
Do you anticipate any subservice investigation? Are you worried about anything in the ground?
No, not really. I mean, everything there is built on slab. It is a two-story building. It's two levels. There will be quite a bit of grading. We do expect there to be some stormwater work. This will be built with current stormwater requirements. So Michael Smith is going to be involved in the project and his team also in the design process, and then through some of the construction too, to mitigate some of that.
And then what's your plan for transition, post-demolition, or you have intermediate space?
Yes, so we're working through some of that with our vendors. As you guys know, we're about to bring a new contract for our parks maintenance going into next year, so we'll be having conversations with that vendor too, as we develop what that looks like. We do have some space at Brook Run, kind of down at the end where Tree Top West is, where we have our long-term storage, is what we call it, that we think we can utilize for a transition space while the current building is demolished and rebuilt.
All right, I hope for a good, quick, successful build.
Hey, Brent, this is a great, great day to see this. And, you know, how did we get here? We, we strategically talked about this at a retreat. We set aside capital funds that we had some one-time, one-time funds coming through us, and we strategically said, what are we looking to invest in? And, and Tom over there led a capital committee to look at that. It was the number one thing that they said, and we put the money set aside to build this. So it's something that's well-needed, and it's great to see how we act as the strategic role of providing direction for the use of our funds to see this to come to fruition. And I, I really appreciate that of what, what we're doing, you know, seeing things getting done. It's awesome thing. Just as an aside, always looking for those sustainable features, anything green. I'm not an expert, I can't list off the things, but think about those things as we progress with building out brand-new things. It's going to last for a generation, so let's hopefully, we can, even though it's used behind office scenes, but it'd be nice to just see what we can try to look into, right? That'd be great, Brent. Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? John.
Yes, thank you, Brent. Is there any underground storage of fuel or anything in the ground that's buried in a sense of remediation that you're aware of? All right, we have had asbestos issues in the past, and I'm sure you'll be looking for those. This is probably going to be our very first newly designed public building. I mean, large public building. Well, hold on a second, let me ask that question. Do you consider this a public building?
Not in the sense that I do the Northwoods Pavilion at the, art, I mean, at the Nature Center or the Library Art Center. This facility typically is not open to the public because of the types of chemicals and equipment and things that our vendors have stored there. Certainly by invitation or through meeting, a, a, a public member of the public could go there for a meeting, but it's typically closed to the public.
I guess I'm thinking of the construction requirements for public buildings. There's, since this is not going to be a public building in that sense in which you're describing, we don't need to have it built out to, let's say, emergency shelter areas and things like that. I'm just, I just want to make sure that we're thinking about that realm. And whether we need to plan for that or not, I don't know of any other emergency shelter areas in the park, whether it be for your employees or anybody else. I'm just, any thoughts given to that topic?
And certainly, we're going to follow any state or federal guidelines of what needs to be in the building. Fortunately, the, the architect that we're working with, with LDD Blue Lawn, has a lot of experience in this field. They've designed maintenance facilities, community centers, school facilities. Michael Smith and I both worked with them on past projects, so they're very sharp guys, but those are certainly questions we can bring up with them as we get into the concept and design process.
Thank you. That's all. I just want to make sure this, again, this is like one of our first public buildings. I guess your, your, your nature center is another one. But yes, this is, this is new to us, so thank you.
Anybody else? I think this can be consent. Does anybody disagree? Okay, so this can be consent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And public comment, let me see where we are. But first, there are already wide-scale power outages in Dunwoody. It's not surprising.
That would be you and I.
Right. There looks to be two or three already, so just be aware, be careful if you're going home. It does, it is, we, we barely have power. We're very fortunate, because they, right, across the street, they don't. Mary, you see for public comments? Wait, that's okay. You just make sure, adjust the microphone so we can hear you, please.
Mary Cassie, I live in an apartment very close to here. Appreciate all your work, city council and mayor. But I read through all the pages that are on this thing about apartments, and I hope that you will consider having apartment dwellers come when you have the meetings. We're going to have to pay for all this. I live in an apartment complex, has some cameras, I'm not sure where, but we have scanners to get into our parking garage. We have scanners to get into our building. We have scanners to get on our hallways. How many cameras do we need? And some of this goes into infrared in case it's dark at night and you don't get a good picture. And please spend a lot of time on this and have, as I said, apartment, I'll come speak up. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I think that concludes public comment. City manager comments?
No comments to see it in, Mayor. We do not need an executive session.
Council comments? Joe?
Just pivoting back to the speed cameras, you know, it's an all of the above. I, I, I ran to say I want to create a city or build a city where every child should be able to safely walk or ride the bike to safely school. And really, this is just one of the many things that we're building out the infrastructure of putting in multi-use paths and trails and having traffic calming in neighborhoods and education and outreach. Just, it's all the above effort. So I really, really just am very proud of where we are today and what we're doing collaboratively. So it's, it's a good, good day here, and it's a great, a great item to have passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing none.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Tom. Second, come on, people. Do you really want to stay longer? Move back, second by Catherine, all in favor. Any opposed? That's it, guys. Thank you. Right, y'all can stay here.